Good evening, welcome to the Town of Limington Select Board Meeting for the, for May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. We will call the meeting to order at seven P M., and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need an approval of the meeting minutes for May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes?
I second that.
I was not here this week, or last week, all those in favor? Motion carries. Approval of the warrants for week twenty-one payroll warrant forty-eight of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred, twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Appropriations warrant number forty-nine for forty thousand, two hundred, ten dollars and seventy-eight cents. The totals for warrant forty-eight and forty-nine is sixty-eight thousand, four hundred, thirty-eight dollars and seven cents.
I make a motion, we accept warrants forty-eight and forty-nine.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion carries. Couple of items that were recurring bills for those warrants was Bureau of Motor Vehicles for nine thousand dollars, two hundred, eighty-eight dollars and five cents. Jensen Baird Legal Services, two thousand dollars, six hundred, eighty. UniFirst Corp, Uniform Service, ninety-four dollars, twenty-two cents. And Pitney Bowes Postage Meter Service, two hundred, fifty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. Purchase orders, Tammy, would you like to read the purchase orders?
I will. Purchase orders request for fire and EMS. A request to pay Striker for modem, one thousand, eighty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. A request to pay Amazon for ink and binders, two hundred and twelve dollars and forty-eight cents. A request to pay Sleeper's Market for brushes and brooms, eighty dollars and fifty-four cents. A request to pay Sleeper's Market for food to feed crew during hose and ladder testing, a hundred and sixty-one dollars and six cents.
I will make a motion to approve the fire and EMS purchase order requests.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Animal Control Officer Purchase Order Request. A request to pay Admiral Fire and Safety for ballistic vest, mole pouch, and I D. place card, one thousand, three hundred, twenty-five dollars and thirty-two cents.
I will make a motion to approve the Animal Control Officer Purchase Order Request.
I'll second.
Was that, oh, you didn't read the second one, did you?
Oh, I did not. A request to pay Jason Webster for four draw Victor Fire Proof Safe, four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I will make a motion to accept the Animal Control Officer Purchase Order Requests.
Can I second, I'll second that?
I have the second and, and all those in favor? Motion carries.
Parks and Rec. A request to pay SAD Six Bonnie Eagle Transportation for February and April School Vacation Trips, six hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-six cents. And a request to pay Anderson Septic for nine hundred dollars.
I will make a motion to approve the Parks and Rec Purchase Order Requests.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Code Enforcement. A request to pay modem waves for Dell Monitor, Desk Stand, and Desktop Computer, one thousand, two hundred, fifty-five dollars.
I will make a motion to approve the Code Enforcement Purchase Order Request.
I will second that.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
And Select Board. A request to pay Elwell Gammon for Johnson Cemetery Cleanup, a hundred dollars.
Make a motion to approve the Select Board's Purchase Order Request.
I will second that.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
And the Library, a request to pay Amazon for books, a hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents.
I will make a motion to approve the Library's Purchase Order Request.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Weekly updates of activities, Jason, why don't you lead us through that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll lead off with, let me see here. The Code Enforcement, I'll lead off Code Enforcement. Code Enforcement has just an update for everybody, there is now an administrative fee. Twenty-five dollar administrative fee for permitting. Anything above the minimum or the, the base permit is, there will be an added twenty-five, twenty-five dollar admin fee. Along with that, the FEMA, Flood Risk Open House, FEMA will, sorry, I take that back. York County Emergency Management Agency will be having a flood risk open house at the Management Agency, one forty-nine Jordan Springs Road, Alfred, Maine, on Monday, June third, from three to seven P M. It's an opportunity to chat with one of the FEMA state and local officials to get assistance with finding your property on the new flood maps that FEMA's come out with. Understanding your flood risk, flood insurance. There is no formal presentation, you can arrive at any time, so it just, they're gonna go over a lot of the new stuff, it'd be great for any of you that are maybe in the flood area. Also, Craig had mentioned that Judy has finished the gravel pit inspection reports. We now have a, what looks to be a four-page gravel pit inspection report that's, that's gonna be coming due, I think, in June, I believe Craig's gonna be out doing his inspections. That's pretty much it for Code Enforcement. Let me see, as far as, we did meet with,
Madison?
Madison, I will let you, you've got both Madison's and the fire and EMS on your part, if you wanna go ahead. You took notes, so.
Yes, Madison was in the office this afternoon, giving us an update on his department, and the summer camp is full, both age groups. And he's got to hire two, maybe three more positions for the camp this year. The paving has been done this week over on the basketball court slash pickleball courts. And all that needs to be done now is for the lines to be painted. The chips are down around the playground area, so that is looking really, really nice. What a wonderful area for the townspeople to have access to. Camp Momodeo opens up on Saturday, the beach. He already has two floating docks in with two more to go. And the buoy line is in, that keeps people in the correct area. He's also working on a grant from FEMA for a generator for the Old Town Hall. He sent everything all in, he did say that it got sent back for a small revision in a form to be signed. So, the site plan is done, pictures will be submitted. And there will be a bus lease for summer camp from SAD Six, which is what he does every summer. And all we'll be doing is putting temporary insurance on that bus for the summer. And that's it for update. For Momodeo, I'm sorry. Do you want me to just, did I print that, I don't think I brought.
Okay, I can go over the, yeah, the update for the fire and EMS. For week ending May eighteenth, they had thirteen calls. Month to date's twenty-six, year to date's two hundred and eighty-seven. They had two fire calls and eleven EMS calls. The schedule had a one-night over shift vacant this week, the EMS director is still out sick, we wish you well, Dawn. Trainings and meetings, in-house, a Monday night, had an officers' meeting to schedule trainings and work details. Let me see, the facility, they're still having problems with the circuit breaker tripping in the control. Equipment, hose and ladder testing was done Monday, the thirteenth. All ladders and nozzles passed. We lost two lengths of inch and three-quarter hose and one length of hard suction. Vehicles, they still have an issue with Engine Six leaking coolant from the radiator and water from the tank. Unit ten is due for an oil change and brakes, the Public Works is aware and will be doing it on Monday. That's pretty much, special notes, we are currently eighteen calls behind May's month-to-date and fifteen calls ahead of last year's year-to-date. So, thank you EMO for sending us that update. Just another update on, to touch base on the news with the zoning ordinances, we do have, next week, we do have the public hearings. We will have the public hearing in reference to the informational hearing for the, the ordinances coming forth, and I will touch base, I'll read down with this, I know we keep pushing it. I did put out a, a full two-page report of the bullet points on the Limington Town page, so you can also access this anytime you want on social media. The zoning ordinance corrects typos and any incorrect references, which will basically were typos. Adds clarification information on the notice of decisions that the planning board issues once applications have been finally approved. On land use tables, it corrects that under the medical marijuana production, the application has to be approved by the planning board and not the code enforcement officer, as it's a conditional use permit, which the C E O cannot approve. And it brings the ordinance into compliance with the main state law. Once again, another, just a state, state ordinance that we're adopting. Extraction ordinance, all existing gravel pits are grandfathered from these changes until they expand their operation or open a new pit. Does not have any impact on the smaller pits unless they expand significantly and have to comply with the main D E P. requirements, so. Really ain't changing much in the town's way unless they really, you know, add another five acres of pit, or they shut down and reopen. It's a lot of clarification on reclamation standards when a pit's closed. Clarifies language so everyone knows what to expect, such as buffer drifts, lighting, rehabilitation of the pits. It requires location of seasonal high water table using boring or test pits. Requires a hydrological study for all new or expanding pits by having two monitoring wells for every ten acres. Determines the distance that must be maintained from Wells residential water supply. Prior to opening a new pit, requires a performance guarantee acceptable to the Select Board. It increases the liability insurance coverage necessary from one million to two million. And it brings the ordinance into compliance with state law. Once again, it's just, these are all, it's all laws, or soon to be, hopefully, everybody passes this, it's just protection for the town and their people. It protects your wells, protects your water supply. It's once again, a lot of, lot of work put forward by a citizens group that the, the planning board, and the planning board. So, the subdivision ordinance, which is the Fire Protection and Public Safety Section, this clarifies the distance needed between the building and the water supply. Eliminates contradictions in the ordinance, clarifies ordinance language as to meaning of certain procedures, and further protects the town from liability. Cisterns and how they are to be constructed more clearly defined, this is a much-needed due to significant problems we've had in the past. Ensures proper inspection by fire chief and code enforcement before final approval, and defines responsibility for maintenance of cisterns and dry hydrants by the homeowners association after. Once again, it's just a protection for the town and people that are moving into subdivisions for water supplies. Floodplain referendum, basically, it's FEMA's mandating this for the towns to adopt. It's, it's to protect the town and the townspeople, anybody that's in floodplain, you really ought to seek out that, the class or the, the meeting they're gonna have with the York County Emergency Management, that would be great to hear what they can do to help you. It would also go and coincide with this floodplain referendum. Town must adopt by July seventeenth of two thousand and twenty-four. If this does not get a passed or adopted during our vote, it would put the floodplain people in jeopardy along with the possibility of us losing any funding for any damages due to a natural disaster here, such as bridges, roads, culverts, we would lose any money from FEMA. So, it doesn't cost the town anything, this is just, it, it's, there are currently six families in town with FEMA policies, and this could affect future sales of homes. Existing policies will still be in effect, but may not be renewed if this didn't pass. If not adopted, the FEMA insurance policies will be, no FEMA insurance policies will be issued, so once again, just a protection of the people in this, in this town. And last but not least, L D. two thousand and three referendum. Here we are again, it's a state mandated law, all we're doing is just kinda simplifying them, the law into, you know, terms that, instead of having to go through and find it on the state side, we're just breaking it down for you, or the planning board has done a great job with this. Towns must adopt by mid-July, Limington not seriously affected as we don't have public water or sewer. It basically allows up to three dwellings, dwelling units per lot. This could be the original house with an accessory dwelling like an in-law apartment, and another house. But if you're adding another house, the lot size required in your zone or district would have to double. For example, if you had a required lot size of three acres to build a house, you would have to have six acres to put a second house on that lot. But there is no requirements for separate frontage, or another driveway, or requirements for additional parking spaces, so you could still come off your existing driveway, your same frontage, you just, you still have to, you'll still have to meet the, the existing setbacks as required. Tiny homes are allowed, and, yeah, so that should sum up the referendums, like I said. You will see in the shopper's guide that the, these are also posted for the people to see and then read. It's on social media, they've, the planning board has done a lot. Not just the planning board, but the departments have done a lot to put these forth, and once again, most of them are just basically following the main state guidelines, and we're just trying to simplify. So, I think that sums up, other than the public, did you have this page you wanted to read, or?
Yes, just to add to that, an informational public hearing for proposed ATV access from, from, which will affect Axelson and Boothby Roads, because there's, there's a part of the trail that's being closed off, and so in order to get from, to continue driving, once that, they hit that, they'd be coming out onto Axelson and Boothby in order to get back onto the trail. So, we just wanna have a, an informational public hearing on that, so any concern, people can just come and ask questions, and we, those can be answered, and that'll be May thirtieth, also next Thursday night, as well as a public hearing on the purchase of the gym from, did you already say that, from the Limington Academy trustees? So, we've been saying that each week as well. So, that is in the shopper's guide also, feel free to peruse that and look it over, because this is all trying to get as much information as we can out to the people before the vote on Tuesday, June eleventh. So, we just wanna make sure that you get all the information that you need before you have to vote. And we encourage people to vote, so, and having all, all the information that you could have in front of you is always a plus.
Thank you Tammy, thank you Jason. Information bulletin, Select Board Office hours are Thursday, two P M. to eight P M., the on-air meeting time is Thursdays at seven P M. Transfer station hours are Saturday and Sunday from nine A M. to four P M., and Wednesday from twelve to four P M. A transfer station sticker must be attached to your vehicles windshield for the disposal of all items. Transfer station stickers are available at the town office for twenty dollars, no sticker is required to use at swap shop. The transfer station does not accept brush or yard clippings. General Assistance Office is open on Wednesdays from nine to eleven A M., applications are available anytime from the town clerk's office during their normal business hours. Applications must be filled out and accompanied with supporting documentation and must be signed. Planning Board meets at the municipal complex the first and third Monday evenings at seven P M. Parks and Rec, hosting cards and coffee over at the Old Town Hall Building every Wednesday from nine-thirty A M. to eleven-thirty A M. Come in, meet some folks, play some games, if you have questions or suggestions, just reach out to Madison Moody at the rec director at m dot moody at limingtonmain dot gov. With that said, is there anything else the Select Board would like to talk on?
Yes, I have one more thing, if I may.
Absolutely.
Okay, I took.
Okay, um, I took some time and typed up something for myself, um, so it's something that I thought about for a while and thought it was important for me to do. Um, I am stating for the record tonight, this is a statement of no confidence in the Select Board Chair. I'm not calling for a vote of no confidence. For now, it's my statement only. I do not feel that the Chair has acted in the best interest of the Town of Limington concerning one department and not having transparency to the remaining members of the Select Board concerning this department. Several issues have come to the attention of the Board in the past months, only to have them dismissed or ignored by the Chair. He has attempted to hold sole authority with the dealings of the Public Works Department, and up until today, we've had no say or input to try to rectify issues. There are town ordinances and rules in place to follow that seem to be deemed unnecessary by the Chair. This is his opportunity to correct. Every section in the Road Commissioner Ordinance states that the Public Works Director answers to the whole Board, not just one member. So, I would like to make a motion to hold the Public Works Department, uh, Director responsible to follow all the articles and sections of the ordinance and report and update only to the whole Board on Thursday afternoon as he plans ahead, discusses all repairs, maintenance, and other projects with the Selectmen. This includes developing a work schedule detailing the work to be done, a cost estimate for the work, and the location of the work projects. This is specifically taken from Article 2, Section 2, Paragraph 5, not to be done via email, but before the whole Board in person. In addition, the Public Works Director will each month submit a complete and detailed maintenance log on all town vehicles and equipment used for road maintenance as stated in Article 2, Section 2, Paragraph 13. End of motion.
I will second that motion.
Discussion?
With that said, these are opinions, not facts, and cannot be proven one way or the other.
Uh, all those in favor of this motion? All those opposed? That's it for me.
All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
All those in favor? We adjourned.